All right, Clerk, read the roll.
All right, this is, this is the committee on Budget. This is March 24th, 2014, we're at 6:00 p.m. I have Counselor Capone.
Here.
I have Counselor Delasola.
Here.
I got Counselor Dupree.
Here.
I got Counselor Higginson.
Here.
I got Counselor Mackays.
Present.
I got Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
I have Counselor Napolitan.
Here.
I have Counselor Sika.
Here.
I have Counselor Sonny.
Here.
And I have Counselor Semenelli.
Here.
About ten minutes, we have a quorum, please stand up and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, the first piece of business, this is approved by Counselor Michael Mackays as President, that the described sound be appropriated to the operate the water and sewer enterprise budget.
Services, yeah. Who is, no, this is.
What's that?
Right here, with the watch on. Now, is each individual person. What do you, make a motion to have them come up before.
We have a motion on the floor, please.
Second.
Okay, the motion made for the sums that appropriate for the water sewer enterprise, invited the mayor to the other budget director, Director of Services. This, first time we're doing this, are we doing anything up here, Mr. Burley? Okay, we're down, okay.
Oh, thank you.
This is Kay.
Oops, sorry, is this on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. This is a brief PowerPoint presentation that would go with the budget book for the water sewer enterprise fund that we distributed two weeks ago. We just wanted to give you a brief overview of this and for members of those viewing on camera, fiscal year 15 water sewer enterprise budget. First slide basically is an overview of what an enterprise fund is designed to do. It's designed to establish a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for municipal services which fees are charged in exchange for goods and services. City of Everett established an enterprise fund for its water and sewer operations back in fiscal year 2012. And the enterprise fund as is designed is to capture all of the direct and indirect costs of operating the water and sewer department. So, for the operational budget, you'll see in your budget books, the total operating budget for the water and sewer enterprise fund fiscal year 15 is fifteen million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Fifteen million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-five represents the direct costs, including the salaries and expenses, the debt service, the assessments from the MWRA, and some other costs that go along with running the enterprise fund. There's five hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-one of indirect costs, which basically costs that are budgeted in the general fund that the water and sewer enterprise fund will pick up, primarily fringe benefits such as health insurance, retirement assessment, other intergovernmental expenses such as the cost of the treasury, the cost of the collector's office, the cost of the accountant office to do some of the functions that we do in order to run this enterprise fund. The goal of the enterprise fund is to have user fees cover one hundred percent of both the direct and indirect costs. So, the goal is to have fifteen point eight million dollars of revenue coming in to support fifteen point eight million dollars of expenditures out. Also, as part of the water and sewer enterprise fund, there's a capital portion. So, you have the capital plan for the general fund and within the enterprise fund, you have the capital portion for the water and sewer. So, primary goal of the capital budget for water and sewer is to preserve and maintain the water and sewer infrastructure. Majority of this infrastructure in the city has exceeded its useful life. So, with the Director of City of Services and the Superintendent of the Water and Sewer, we're currently doing analysis of all of the pipes and pumps throughout the city. And this analysis will help us then determine how we spend our capital dollars. So, as far as capital budget goes, in this budget for VOU, there's three million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of capital in this budget, which includes a million dollars for water main replacement. The water main replacement program, we fund through the MWRAs, LWSAP program. That's basically a zero percent loan program that we qualify for as being part of MWRA. We also have two million, eighty-eight thousand dollars set up for sewer info and infiltration projects. This program's a little better, forty-five percent of the money is the grant money. So, we don't have to bond or borrow any of that money. Fifty-five percent of that, two point oh eight eight million, is also through a zero percent interest-free loan through the MWRA, so. And then there's a small portion of capital contemplated for the replacement of fire hydrants and to begin a stormwater improvement program for fiscal year 15. The detail for all this capital stuff you'll find within your binders, I believe in section seven and six. So, basically, the MWRA every year does a survey on water and sewer rates. Obviously, the rates we charge bring in the revenue that we need to cover the cost of the operation. I thought it was worth noting that the average water and sewer charge for all MWRA communities is one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars annually. Currently, Everett's average water and sewer charge is eight hundred fifty-four dollars. So, the good news is we're about five hundred thirty-five dollars less than the average water and sewer rates for MWRA communities, about thirty-nine percent less. The bad news is that because they're so low, we may have to research getting some additional revenues in to cover the cost. But we are the fifth lowest community of the sixty communities in the MWRA. So, in order to fully cover the direct indirect costs, like I said, including the MWRA assessments, debt service, staffing, et cetera, we will need some kind of rate adjustment for fiscal year 15. Now, we haven't had a budget adopted yet by the council, but we are working with Brown University, Tormand Center of Public Policy to do a full analysis of our water and sewer enterprise fund budget and to try to determine what type of rate adjustments we need to cover these costs. And at that, I'm happy to take any questions. I know Melissa and Jay are also there to answer any types of questions, but happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
If I may from the chair. How much in free cash did we allocate for 2014 year? I know we're allocating this for the next year's budget, for 2015, right?
We haven't done any free cash for enterprise fund projects. We try to fund the enterprise fund projects through the enterprise fund budget. So, we haven't designated any dollars from free cash for water and sewer enterprise fund capital.
Okay, so what you're saying here, this one point three here from free cash will be.
That will be for the next presentation, Council.
Okay.
That's the general fund capital improvement.
General fund capital improvement, okay. So, what, what is the amount of money you're looking for, for this alone? The.
I think it was three point two million dollars, but most of those dollars for capital.
Yep, with grants, I saw that, yep.
They're through the MWRA loan program, so they're zero percent interest loans. So, we may have to come before you to get the authorization to access that money, but it won't be free cash we're using, it'll be a loan authorization.
So, the whole three million dollars will be a loan?
Well, forty-five percent of two million of it is actually a grant, but when we come before you to ask, we'll, they make you ask for the gross amount, but we'll only have to borrow the net amount, the fifty-five percent of that two point.
Okay, and that'll be on the 2015 budget?
Yeah, assuming this budget gets adopted, then we'll come before you with the loan order to authorize those projects.
Now, this, now this budget for this year, do we have adequate funds to support this to the end of the year?
For fiscal year 14, we're, we're running great right now. This is actually starting July 1st, this budget. So, this is what's coming before you for fiscal year 15, which starts on July 1st.
A quick question, an outside vendor that would do a job, for instance, would be paid through the enterprise fund or through some other fund?
If it's a water and sewer project or a water and sewer vendor, be paid through the water and sewer.
All water and sewer, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Counselor, Ron McKinnon?
I just wanted to know on this, was there a, excuse me to my counsel, to the left, was there, is this a matching grant, is that what it is? Do we have to match them, or can you just explain?
No, it's not a match, for the sewer portion, it's not a matching grant, it's just their program. They allocate us an amount to borrow based upon our percentage of usage.
Okay.
And in the sewer portion of it, that is forty-five percent grant dollars and fifty-five percent, zero percent interest loan. So, there's not a matching, so to speak, but they'll give us forty-five percent free and then we'll borrow fifty-five percent at zero percent interest.
And that comes out of us, so fifty-five percent?
Well, the debt service payments will be part of the budgets going forward. So, if we authorize a bond this year, you'll typically see the bond payments in fiscal year 16 and 17 and 18, so. In some cases, you may have a small interest-only portion of a payment, but basically, it's, it's a year behind. So, if you authorize a bond for fiscal year 15, you usually don't start seeing payments until fiscal year 16.
Okay, and it will go out to bond?
Yeah, the MWRA will go out to bond, but they require us, you as a body, to authorize for them to go out and give us those dollars.
And what rate, what rate would that bond be?
Zero percent.
Zero percent, thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Viskay. The, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015 is fifteen point eight million. What was the enterprise fund budget for fiscal year 2014?
Fourteen point five million in round numbers.
And you said that right now, we still have a balance in there, correct?
Well, I'm saying revenues coming in are supposed to support the expenditures going out. So, we're on pace to collect our fourteen and a half million.
Okay.
To cover fourteen and a half million dollars' worth of expenses for fourteen.
Okay, so we're going to break even on that, yeah.
So, hopefully, we'll have a surplus, but I don't want to promise anybody anything out there, just yet.
As long as we're breaking even, that's good. All right, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Counselor Politan, thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Viskay. The fifty-five percent loan portion, the zero percent loan portion of this, how far, how many years is that projected out? What's the payment schedule on that?
There's a projected debt service in the back of your mind, off the top of my head, I believe it's a ten-year, but I think tab eight will show you the projected debt service for the enterprise fund. Well, I didn't put, I didn't put the projected debt service for those projects yet, but I believe it's a ten-year amortization, so if it's a million dollars, that would be about a hundred thousand a year for ten years. I'll verify that for you, but I believe that's the case.
Please, thank you. Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was in favor of this water enterprise to begin with, but there's some confusion going on. Right now, the water enterprise, you collect the money for the water to support the water enterprise portion of this budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Whereas before, if we didn't collect enough money, it went on your tax bill. When we didn't have the water enterprise, if you weren't collecting enough money in the water department, that became a shortfall and it went on the tax bill, is that correct? In other words, we had to raise it through the taxes.
Yes, well, taxes is one source of revenue that comes in, there's also local receipts, there's also state aid, but the, the correct answer is the general fund would have to subsidize the water enterprise fund.
Right.
And that general fund, one could argue that those are tax dollars, but that's only one portion of general fund revenue, the state gives us a revenue, motor vehicle excise, so, but yeah. If it's not fully supported by the water rates, the general fund has to subsidize the water.
Have to subsidize the water, okay. Now, have we done all the meters in Everett, the water meters?
We have currently, I believe, almost eighty percent complete with our water meter installation program.
And when do you plan on completing the difference of the other twenty percent?
The goal is to complete by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. But I believe there are, there's, the last five percent are usually the most difficult to install for various reasons, but we're moving right along. We have bi-weekly meetings, I believe the last meeting we had, we're at about eighty percent completion of the water meter project.
Okay, and how about the, the businesses, the commercial businesses?
Eighty percent represents all, I don't know the proportion, but eighty percent, everyone, every water meter in the city is being replaced and we've completed eighty percent, I don't know what.
So, eighty percent includes commercial and residential?
I believe a lot of the commercial was done actually first, but there's still some commercial that is being done right now.
We did the pilot with the commercial meters, if you, if you remember correctly, of the original project?
Yeah.
We did the hundred large meters then, so most of the large meters have been helped with already.
Okay, my other question, Mr. Chairman, are we doing this like a budget hearing? Are we going through the book, line items, how are we setting this up?
I'm not sure, are we doing this, are we referring this to a way, some kind of public hearing?
But a public hearing.
We have forty-five minutes to do three different things, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, this, this has got to be referred out to a public hearing anyway.
Right.
Yes.
It's tonight, so we'll have a public hearing on this.
So, when we, when you have the public hearing, we will go through the book at the same time?
Yes, I believe so, yep. I don't think we're going to be able to do it tonight if we have a meeting at seven o'clock.
It's going to be hard.
You know?
So, this would be us, I, I thought that this was, this was all about, this was a budget hearing. Is that my misunderstanding, or? It's a budget hearing, yes, it is.
I mean, if we have time to go through them, I mean, if you want to go through them tonight, we can. And I just got my book now, so I haven't been through this.
Oh, okay, well, then I don't.
If you're ready.
Because we actually got the books two weeks ago.
You did, I didn't.
So, we're going to refer it to the.
I thought that was the, the way it would be handled here, I'm not sure what we're going to do. Melissa, maybe you can help me on this, was this supposed to be an actual meeting, an actual?
The way it was referred out of, out of the city council, my understanding was that you were going to have your budget meeting today. You can go on, whoever you prefer to go on, but that was the way I understood the referral.
And then after the budget hearing, you would go, it would go through a public hearing?
Then it would be referred to a public hearing, that's how I understood it.
So, why are we asking questions tonight if we're going to have a public hearing?
That's what I, that's what I was trying to answer, Counselor DeFlorio, she wanted to know if we're going to go through the book tonight.
But I have some questions, but there's no sense in asking the questions if we're going to have a hearing on this.
Exactly.
I thought a public hearing was only for the public to, to give their recommendations, doesn't mean we're voting on this tonight, we're only asking questions.
This is our hearing, it's a committee.
Right.
Yes.
That, that, that's all it is right now, it's just a committee hearing now.
And that referred to a public committee.
And then we refer it to a public. With all due respect to actually the president, the reason why you probably didn't get your, your books was because you were in a hospital. And glad to have you back, so.
All right.
But now you get the time to actually review it and hear debate back and forth at the committee level. So, that's what we're having now.
You're still, if your counsel is still asking.
That's my understanding on that.
Do we vote to approve this tonight after we ask?
No, we won't be, approval will be sent to a public hearing, that was my belief when we came in there. But I know there's two people like to ask some questions, our counsel handling, do you like to ask some questions?
I have two quick questions, just, Mr. Chairman, please, excuse my back. Could I get a, a listing of the staffing of the water sewer enterprise fund? Is that in the, in the book somewhere?
Yeah, if you go to tab two, you should see the salary staffing sheet at the third page in, on tab two.
Tab two.
So, it should be the council order, then it should be the one page of budget, and then personnel services sheet.
Okay, okay, thank you. And my other question, one other question was that you have indicated that the Director of City Services and Superintendent of Water and Sewer are doing a citywide analysis, and I wanted to know how long that will take and will we be able to get a copy of it?
I'll defer to the, Mr. Markcott.
Mr. Markcott?
Jay Markcott, Director of City Services, that's ongoing, we've been working with CDM, Weston and Sampson, World Tech Engineering to come up with the best layout of how we're going to proceed. Obviously, it depends on funding and everything, but we're, we pretty much have a good idea as to where we need to move forward. But we're going to be, you know, laying things out as a priority in the next few weeks, probably a month or so.
Sure, but I mean, I just want to know when the report will be done and when we can get a copy.
Probably about a month.
About a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sichella?
Yes, I have a couple of questions on some amounts here. On the salaries, last year, we had a budget for four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. This year, we're up a hundred, six hundred eleven thousand dollars, total of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars more. Could you tell me what, what's the big cost difference there?
I'll, I'll take this one, Rich.
Sure.
Jay Markcott, Director of City Services. Part of my tasks when I was hired by the city was to take a good, hard look at our water and sewer department. I made some adjustments in where I see the department going. We got rid of the deputy director position and have just one superintendent now. The, we're having a part-time administrative person to do the meter program. There's like, you know, we're dealing with like six thousand meters so far to date. There's a lot of entry and data work that entails with that. And there's also going to be some monitoring and follow-through as the program starts picking up and we're in full swing, so there's going to be a lot of data entry as time moves, you know, as we're getting to that time. But the big thing is that I'm creating two new foreman positions and they're working foremen. And the reason for this is to have two crews that could prioritize our maintenance, repair, and that would be, that they'd be dedicated to do just that work throughout the city. They'd be doing maintenance and repair, they'd be doing hydrant flushing, they would be doing various tasks that we should be doing right now to maintain our system. And the other crew would be doing water main breaks, special like activities that we need to do with like valve box that is broken, we know that needs to get replaced, things of that nature, where we can start catching up instead of being reactive, we would actually start being proactive as a department. And that's, that's what I'm presenting to you in this budget, is two working foremen that would actually start doing the tasks that I just laid out to you.
Does that mean that we're not going to subcontract any of the repairs as we have been doing, or are we going to do it in-house?
We'll, we'll be doing subcontracting as well, there's just some work that we cannot do. Insertion valves, large, large-scale projects, if we cannot shut the water off, we need to get experts to get in to do the job.
I might as well ask you all these questions rather than Mr. Viskay. We have an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in this budget for meter repairs. I thought we're repairing, replacing all these meters with new meters. Why do we need twenty-five thousand repair meters?
That, that part right there is, is the portion where we can do our, our own internal repairs are, you know, if there just needs to be a meter replacement because one goes faulty or part of the, the program where someone could say, hey, my, can you look at my meter? I think it might be, you know, misreading or whatever, we can actually test if it's a part or whatever, that's where we would take that money for that line item.
Professional development, forty-five hundred dollars, could you tell me what that's about?
Part of licensing for the water department, we need to have so many people with. Ernie, what's the, what's the license? Distribution license through the state of Massachusetts, and you need to upkeep that license annually. And there is trainings and courses throughout the year to maintain that license.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Semenelli?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to probably the Director of City Services. Concerning the, the fire hydrant replacements, how bad are the, are we going to replace all the fire hydrants? How, I mean, you got fifty thousand dollars, is that going to be enough to take care of it? Is there a problem with a lot of them, or are we going to be replacing, or?
Again, that's, that's another aging infrastructure situation that we're under. We have a list with Ernie and the, the chief, the water superintendent and the chief of fire. We have a priority as where, where, what we need to replace, and that is going to be an annual thing that we're going to continually keep doing until we.
Eventually, you're going to replace them all?
Most of them, yes. Most of the stuff like if we have road construction, part of the road construction project, we'll likely have a new hydrant replaced as part of the project.
Same with the wa, the waters, the storm drains?
Storm drain.
That's a big problem.
That's a, that's a whole other animal, and we, we have a lot.
Hundred thousand, but that, that's a serious problem, we get some serious flooding.
It's, that, that is a whole other animal, and right now, we, I am looking into subcontracting, subcontracting that work out. Reason being is, you know, we can do the work in-house, not a problem. It's the debris and the material where it needs to be tested, analyzed through a lab and needs to sit for a holding period. I don't want to deal with it because we, our yard's too small to stockpile catch basin debris and grit where I can just hire a subcontractor, they'll do the work and take the material out with them.
And one other thing, I, like yesterday, I guess they were flushing the, the fire hydrants and there was a water main break in front of the, in front of the McConception Church. Was that because of flushing them out and the, the pipes are so old that it just rotted out and just?
That, that again is, the best guess is probably from the hydrant flushing, but it could have been just its time to go.
The pipes are a hundred years old anyway.
We have some, we have some lines that are from the late eighteen hundreds.
So, that's an issue, well, I think that's good money there, because eventually, that's a big problem with the, the age of the pipes, and so I, I like that, okay, thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Markcott. I noticed on the, the line items, for overtime, it's five times the amount of last year's budget. Went from thirty thousand in fiscal year 2014. And for fiscal year 2015, you're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand, which is an increase of five hundred percent. Would, you expect me to do a lot of work, I guess?
Actually, it went down to sixty thousand, sir. My, my original request was a hundred and fifty thousand, and yes, I, there is a lot of work out there. We should be doing some of the work that we're, that we do during the day, like hydrant flushing for one or some flush outs, we, we probably should be doing that work at night when it's, you know, one, two in the morning when there is little use of the system and it won't impact anybody in that aspect, but.
And just in addition, historically, we have overspent that account, you can see that as of, I don't know when they printed this, as of three-ten.
That's a slight.
Yeah, that account was already at thirty-four thousand dollars. So, that is, that is an account that we have under budgeted in the past.
Okay, and then one other expenditure line, I'm looking at capital improvements with hydrants. For, we're, right now, we're at twenty-three thousand, three hundred. For, we're, right now, we're at 23,381. How many hydrants have been addressed, do you know? I'll talk ahead. I know it might be an unfair question.
My superintendent says we've done about 60.
About 60. And we've got, uh, requests and recommendation of 50,000 for fiscal year 2015. About how many do you hope to address in 2015?
Uh, depending on the size of the hydrant, they run anywhere between 3,000 to 4,000, so whatever the spot, you know, it's, it is a commodity. They go by whatever the rate of steel is. But, you know, about 3,000 to 5,000, they'll say 3,000 to 5,000 each.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Council Sammy.
Thank you. Um, the majority of the budget here shows that 12,442 roughly is paying to the water and sewer, MWR, uh, MWRA. Do we ever challenge their, um, what they're asking us to pay? Can we ever challenge like the leaks and stuff that we know that we have and lose a lot of the water and?
Uh, we had a, part, part of the MWRAs that they do, um, they do do an audit of the, of the system, and we are... I'm gonna...
What were we, 12, 13?
18 percent. We're about 18 percent for, they call it a loss. I'm sorry I keep adding, but, um, and that's within ra, their average range. Uh, depends, the first question they ask when they come to do an audit is how many fountains you have in town. That's just water going, that, that's considered a leak. Um, so, yeah, that, we're within the range. Um, if we should do more, more diligence into questioning theirs, we would have, they would probably request us to have a meter next to their meter. And, uh, there's, you know, a cost to that, too.
Thank you.
I believe it's, um, uh, Council McKinnon.
If, if in fact we do, um, uh, grant you these two positions that you're looking for, um, will we be doing more of the water hydrants in the city?
Absolutely.
Um, so is that an accurate figure that you're looking for, or do we need to increase that figure?
We, we still have...
Is that an accurate figure?
Yes, it is.
Even with those two gentlemen or ladies that are going to come on?
There is, there is, I, I could ask for four foremen, to tell you the truth, sir. There is that much work.
I, I believe you. So, um, if in fact you had those two individuals, the question is, is, is this enough money for them to actually?
For this year, yes. For, for next year, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Council Paul Towne.
Thank you. Uh, this may be from Mr. Viskey. Uh, under the operational budget, uh, section two, page seven, uh, what is the indirect cost transfers out? I've never seen that line before.
The indirect costs are basically the costs that are budgeted in the general fund operating budget that are picked up by the enterprise fund. Primarily, it's the cost of providing health insurance, cost of the retirement assessment, cost of, uh, shared costs of the treasurer's office, the collector's office, the auditor's office, uh, city council. We apportion out reasonable amounts for, for these types of governmental services that the water and sewer enterprise fund then refund the general government back for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Council DeFlorio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The emergency repairs, I've noticed that you budgeted 150,000 last year and you budgeted the same this year. Is that line item, you, as far as emergencies, I know you can't foresee what's gonna break and what's not gonna break. But if that line item was ever to exceed what you were asking, what would happen in a case like that? Say you had like this water line that just broke right now, I know is a, is a big job.
We'll come at you for more money.
But I thought the, I understand, but the water enterprise is a separate entity, so...
Well, here's, here's, here's the answer that I, I hope is gonna be valid. It's, it's my hope that at the close of fiscal year 14, we're going to generate not a deficit, our, uh, general fund subsidy. I'm hoping to generate a surplus in which they call retained earnings, and those retained earnings are certified in the same way as free cash is certified. So if you notice last year, we had negative retained earnings for water and sewer. And hopefully, those dollars will become available and could address some of these, um, extraordinary unforeseen events now. Obviously, we're trying to budget for something that we have no idea what's gonna happen, so it's our goal to give a fair number based upon some historical, um, trends that we've seen. But the, the short answer is, yeah, if there's no money, we have to come before you and ask for a supplemental appropriation. And then if that appropriation is granted and those revenues from the water and sewer enterprise don't cover the costs, then there'll ultimately be a general fund subsidy going forward. But right now, from when I started to now, I've seen, uh, a, a pretty large turnaround to, uh, these wa, these new water meters are helping a lot. It's almost essentially turned into an audit. We're finding a lot of things, a lot of meters that were slowly calibrated and such. So as I tr, I, I track the revenues every month, and, um, we are on pace to hit our revenue number this year. And I believe that we will have a surplus when we close the year.
Now, when you have a surplus, that surplus stays in the water enterprise. It doesn't go to the general fund, right?
It has to. It has to be. It's the same as free cash. It, it gets certified by the Department of Revenue. And in order to access those dollars, we have to come before you and request those dollars before the vote.
Right. But that, that excess does stay in the water enterprise. It doesn't go to our general fund.
Nope. It's required to stay within the fund.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Council Hallen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one question on the, uh, salary positions. I think it's the sixth one down. We have, uh, senior account clerk in the staff, and the staff required, you have a .857 in there. What is that? What is that for?
She's a 30-hour-a-week clerk.
Pardon?
The FTE is a shortfall for full-time equivalents, so if someone works 30 hours a week, it's 30 divided by 35, which would give you .857. So I, I measure employees by full-time equivalents.
That's good. Thank you. Okay, got that. The next line down says senior account clerk PT, and it's got zero and zero. Uh, and it's asking for $15,855, but you're saying that you don't need that position. Is that my reading that right or wrong?
No, it's just that, uh, full-time equivalents are benefit-eligible employees, so part-timers don't register as an FTE. So you won't have a, a fraction for a part-timer. FTE, full-time equivalent means, in my world, benefit-eligible employees.
But that will be a position that's hired?
Yeah, but part-time position. We don't count, uh, part-timers as full-time equivalents.
Got it.
If that's it, I have just one question, and, uh, two questions, actually. First one is the sewer line cleaning. Do we, don't we have, do we have a machine that does that? Are, are we, are we subbing that money out?
I believe for fiscal year 14, that's a contracted service that we'll be putting out to bid, so you'll see that we haven't expended much money from that. That's a service that'll go to bid.
Didn't we buy that machine, though, for the city?
We, we do have a vac truck. That's what you're asking.
Vac truck is different than this?
Well, you can only do so much with a vac truck. You need to, to actually do a sewer line cleaning. You have to...
And what's the expense for a vac, the vac truck? Was that like a half a million?
They can get that high. They can, you know, you can get a 200...
Okay, but that's what we expended for it, right?
I don't know how much we bought that piece of equipment for.
Yeah, we use the vac truck to clean catch basins.
Okay. And second thing was the, far as the overtime was the one, the 150,000 dollars. I know he explained it, what needs to be done, but we also have, uh, expended emergency repairs, $125,000 so far this year. And I'm sure that job down there is going to blow the 150 out of the window. Cause I always sat down there. It was like 48 trucks down there putting around the hole. Now, when that, where will that come from here? Because I know there's gonna be more money expended after seeing that job in front of St. Teresa's.
Well, what we'll do is we first look within the budget. If there's, uh, funds to be transferred within, into departmental transfers, we'll try to supplement that. And if we don't have enough money to cover it within the operation itself, we'll have to come before you and ask to address the shortfall before we close the books for fiscal year 14.
Right. Uh, the city couldn't have done that repair?
I, I'm not sure about the operation.
That needed insertion valves, and we are not qualified to do that.
Not qualified for that. Okay, thank you very much. Your time now is before you.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, just the, uh, Council Hallen.
One more question. Um, on the Mass Water Resource Authority account description, we have, uh, two, I think they're payments. One is for 4.6 million, one is for 7.8 million.
That's water and, that's what MWRA charges the city of Everett for water and sewer.
Oh, that's what they're charging us for water. It's not a contract or anything. Why are there two, why are there two of them?
One's water, the 4 million is water, and the sewer is the 7 and something.
So this is water and sewer. Okay, thank, thank you.
Uh, anyone be out here, but I'd like to make a motion to send us to a public hearing, uh?
Make a motion to send us to a public hearing?
Second.
Yeah.
Motion is made to send us to a public hea...
Send it to, um, Michael Madalas. To, uh, set up a public hearing.
Okay, so a motion made to send to the city clerk to, uh, set up a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey.
Uh, clerk, read the next. Uh, could like, yeah.
Item number two, disorder of my counsel Michael Marquez as president to submit the capital improvement plan for fiscal 2015. Indictor number three is an order of my counsel Michael Marquez as president to transfer the amount of 1,345,000 from the budgetary fund balance to the described capital improvement.
We have a pretty extensive presentation, so I was gonna make a suggestion that perhaps we go through the finance portion of it tonight and then do the projects at the public hearing. It was only about 30 minutes. It's probably about an 80-page presentation. I don't wanna rush the projects if you have questions about them. So that was maybe my suggestion. So I'm gonna have Rich Viskey come up if, if the body is okay with that and have him do the financial portion tonight. Okay? Thank you.
And then we're gonna have to work the public hearing.
After this way, so that we have one hour. We could, I could go through this thing. Uh, Mr. Viskey, please.
All right. Thank you once again. Um, uh, before you is, uh, a binder that has the fiscal year 14 through fiscal year 18 capital improvement plan, which is a five-year plan, and the fiscal year 15 capital budget. So basically, the layout is a five-year plan, the current year, and four future years, and then a budget for fiscal year 15. So the overview of the capital improvement plan versus capital improvement budget. CIP is the long-term plan for the city's capital improvements, and the capital budget is actually the spending plan for the upcoming fiscal year 15. Combined, the capital improvement program and the capital budget are tools that the city are using to help naturalize how capital projects are identified, prioritized, and funded throughout the city. So fiscal year 14 through 18 capital improvement plan. Uh, just a quick slide on why we do CIP. I took a quote from, uh, my CMA guy. Capital planning and budgeting is essential to economic development, transportation, communication, delivery of essential services, environmental management, and quality of life for our citizens. Much of what is accomplished by local government depends on a sound, long-term investment in infrastructure and equipment. I hope that before you is a sound financial plan for capital improvement. We're trying to ensure that capital needs are being addressed in a responsible manner based upon priority and thoughtful planning. CIP is a critical component to the capital improvement budget and the overall budget strategy, and it gives the administration the ability and knowledge to, uh, address deferred maintenance as well as future needs of the city. So the document before you is a comprehensive document that has, uh, the mayor's message. It has an overview of the program. It has an executive summary of what we're proposing. It has the policies that we follow for both debt issuance and capital improvement. It has a comprehensive five-year summary of what we plan to do, and it has detailed summary of the proposed capital budget, which, as Melissa said, we'll discuss in further detail at the public hearing. All those documents are part of your binder. So briefly, as part, part of the fiscal year 15 capital improvement budget, you'll see that this capital improvement budget is given to you before the operational budget because a lot of how I create the operational budget, or the administration would create the operational budget, would have to do what's voted in this budget. There are debt service, uh, payments that are required. There's some free cash appropriations, some operating budget needs. So basically, we bring the capital budget before you first for its approval, and then I'll dovetail that capital improvement budget into the operation budget that you'll get sometime in mid-May. Basically, a capital asset, the guidelines I give to the, um, city, uh, officials is that it has to have a greater than $25,000 value and has to have a useful life of five years. Anything else would be considered operational. So for fiscal year 15, uh, we have a proposed capital budget of $15,028,818, of which 8,625,000 would be through long-term debt issuance or bonding. There's 4.193 million that would come in through grants and other financing sources. There's $865,000 that we propose to be funded directly through the operational budget. And there's $1,345,000 of capital that we propose to be funded through a free cash appropriation. This list is a scaled-down list of what department have requested of us. So they send us the requests, we prioritize, we try to organize them in, in, in the best, in the most reasonable manner, make them affordable. We present it to you for approval. In summary, uh, capital improvement plan, it tends to be sound financial management. Um, and hopefully, it enhances our community's credit rating, helps control the tax rate, and helps avoid sudden spikes in debt service requirements. Uh, we hope to keep the public informed of the current community objectives as well as the future needs and projects. And we hope that sound financial policies and planning will identify the most economical means of financing these capital improvements throughout the city. And I am happy to answer any questions.
As matters before you, any questions for, for Mr. Viskey?
Well, we were told, we were told that we're gonna send this to, uh...
Yes.
So I make a motion to send it to, uh, city clerk.
I just have one question before we refer this out.
Uh, Council DeFlorio.
This 1.3 million, uh, dollars of the, from the free cash, is that, I believe that's on our agenda this evening? So would this be, if there's any questions, it would be the time to ask it now because it is on our agenda to transfer that 1.3, 4, 5 million dollars from, um, from the general fund into the capital improvement.
Uh, Council Paul Towne.
I believe until we pass this, uh, capital budget overview, any transfer of free cash would be inappropriate. I'm a little confused by that to begin with because if we're looking at, uh, at money transferred from free cash for the, uh, we have a transfer order tonight, uh, for, what was it, 1,345,000, to transfer, uh, projects that are gonna be funded on 2015 budget, I don't understand why we're transferring it from the 2014 free cash. Shouldn't that money be held back? Shouldn't that money only be transferred after this, this budget's been approved?
No, the, the fiscal year 14 free cash is available now, and I'm proposing that we fund the items in this capital plan through the available funds for fiscal year 14.
Right, but we haven't approved this, so how could we fund it if we haven't approved it?
You got the bond, you got the order for free cash with the, um, capital improvement budget.
Right, but if we're gonna be recommending this to a public hearing, so we're not approving this yet, we can't approve a transfer of refund for free cash.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware that...
I'm just concerned about putting the cat, cart before the horse, that's all.
I thought the public hearing was happening at this time, and you would then take action on this. I didn't realize the public hearing was gonna come after the presentation. This is, part of this is new, but the goal was to submit the capital improvement plan along with the money order to address this so that if you made adjustments to this capital improvement plan, then you'd make adjustments to the free cash request. When I submit this capital plan, or when the city submits this capital plan, we're assuming that it's gonna be approved. And I, I submitted the council order with the funding source with the capital plan.
Well, all due respect, I, I, I try not to assume anything if I can help it, and I think that's... I mean, I just have a concern with that. You know, if we haven't approved these, these capital improvements, how can we very well transfer money to fund them if we haven't approved them?
We're gonna have to send that out also. Uh, Council DeFlorio.
So this, that, the amount that's in front of us this evening, we're gonna have to refer it to the public hearing?
Yes.
That's my question. Okay.
And the piece on the calendar to make also referred.
And then this would be approved or disapproved at the public hearing?
Yes.
The night of the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Or would you refer it?
I believe so.
It would have to be referred back to the...
I believe, I believe the public hearing is for the capital plan itself. I don't, I don't believe the free cash appropriation is part of the public hearing, but that's the funding source. Once you approve or modify the capital plan.
Yeah, but until we approve it, how can we fund it? I think we need to lay it over.
So we would lay it over on the agenda. That's what I'm asking.
It would come back to us on the agenda, I think.
Right. But we're not gonna refer this to the public, the 1.3 million dollars to the public hearing? Pending. Okay.
Uh, Council McKinnon.
I know I'm going a little ahead of myself.
Your side, uh, Council Capone.
If there's no objection, we've got, we've got a few minutes, uh, maybe on that, uh, third tab. If there's no objection, we've got, we've got a few minutes, maybe on that third tab, that $1.3 million. There's a list of items. If the order wouldn't mind reviewing those and exactly what's planned for that.
I think it's right now.
Is that, am I correct? Is that the...
Yeah, you're exactly correct, Counselor.
If, if fellow members don't have an issue with that?
No.
Yeah, I got no issue.
So in the back of the room, most of the department heads that may be able to speak in more detail to the individual requests, but to answer your question, the sum of $1.355 million that is being requested are to fund the following items. There is $150,000 requested for a telephone system upgrade through the IT department.
If we could, if we could, too, just go line by line and exactly what we're looking, how many we're looking to address. I don't know if you know that...
With regard to the...
Yeah, instead, instead of just running over them, go line by line. We got informational technology, we have telephone system upgrades for $150,000. Exactly how pervasive is that? Do you know?
I'll let more, some of the details on the IT and such, I'll defer to the department heads, on Melissa's.
So this would be within the PowerPoint, but basically, it's an overhaul of all of our phones and the phone system. It's approximately 300 phones. It's gonna take us from the current system we have now, which is quite archaic, to a VoIP system where it's, we would use the internet basically for our phone lines.
Is it the entire phone system?
Yep, 300 phones for the city. The school department has already done this process, so it would be the city side. After three years, we would see a cost savings of about $150,000, about $50,000 a year.
Okay. I don't have any other questions on that line item.
Okay. Anybody else, anybody question on that line out, on that particular line out? Counselor Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, to the Chief of Staff. On this, this old high school, again, 350, there's $350,000 for another study. How, how many studies have we had already on this high school or something?
Sure. Why don't you let me go through the presentation and get the slides for the old high school, and Jamie Erickson's actually prepared to discuss that with you. So if you don't mind, I believe he's right in the audience, he can come on up and go through the old high school slides with you.
Mr. Chairman, whatever the body wants to do, I'm fine with, but I think that my first suggestion would be just go right down the list. Take each line item and ask whatever question.
Counselor Semenelli, do you have a problem with that? We'll just go right down the list until we reach that, then you'll have the first question, and just get on the list.
Okay. I don't know which one's next.
Inspector Service.
Okay, so Inspector Service's bucket truck. It's gonna make it a little hard for me because I have to kinda go back and forth to find the slides, but we're requesting a new bucket truck. The current bucket truck has body rot and is having some brake problems, I believe. Jim, is that correct?
It's an idling problem, which is...
Sorry, I'm a little off my game here because I'm jumping around in my presentation. So this is part of the, it's $81,000 from free cash. It's part of a vehicle replacement policy that we've implemented in the city to keep our vehicles in a, thank you, safe condition and cost repairs to a minimum. The current vehicle is a 1999. It has body rot and it is having some mechanical issues. If you have any questions for Jim, that is a new department.
Counsel Del Solo.
Jim, how you doing? Is this the one that they use for inspecting the wires? Actually, Louis uses it, the white one?
Yes, this is Luigi's vehicle. He uses this to fix traffic lights, fix fire alarms. You often see him putting up the Christmas decorations on trees and so forth with his vehicle.
It's actually on the screen right now if you wanna take a look at it. This is the current vehicle.
It has some hydraulic issues. When you get up in that truck, up to its full height, it starts to drop down. This is the kind of vehicle that runs heavy hours because it idles, so it's got a lot of time on its engine. Vehicle like this will normally last about ten years in the field. It's past its...
I've seen that truck. It's definitely overdue for a new vehicle.
Thank you for saying.
Thank you.
Uh, any more questions out there on this?
You can see the pictures here with the rot in the body, and obviously, it's quite aged.
Any more questions on this particular piece? All right, we'll go on to the next one.
All right, so this is a Ford F-350 pickup truck with a plow and sander. This is a regular pickup truck that we use. It's a replacement of our fleet through our vehicle maintenance program, and the goal, again, is to keep vehicles in a safe condition and to reduce the repair cost. So this is a regular F-350 as part of a replacement plan, and I don't think we have a picture of the current one. Any questions on that one?
Uh, Counsel Capone.
What's the age of that truck?
It's actually not a replacement. It's a new vehicle.
Oh, you're purchasing a new one.
Up, and Jay's coming up to give us some information if you don't mind. And I apologize that we're jumping around here. It's a little confusing. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Michael, I'll see if anybody has any questions for him.
Excuse me, C-10 is...
Thank you.
...for...
Excuse me, Mr. Michael, one quick question. Is a F-350 pickup truck better than the little wider trucks? I feel what they're called, the ones that, it's the small dump? I mean, if I was doing the sanding and...
I'm wondering if you said...
I mean, is this 350? Is this going to be a work truck? Is it gonna be a...
I would work 350, it's more, you can utilize it very easily.
Yep.
Set it on gas.
All right, thank you. Counsel Del Solo.
Could we get a F-350 dump truck? Because you could use that. Instead of just a pickup truck, once the sander comes off it, it's just a drive-around vehicle pretty much. They put some tools in it, but if you had to...
This, this truck actually is, um, it was built out, I'm trying to utilize our fleet in a way where I have too many people, you know, for a truck to be able to dump. So I have a crewed out, you know, for, you know, sort of, sort of drop back.
Be less vehicles on the job site.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions out there?
Okay, next we have the chipper truck.
On that, following up your...
Regarding the same piece?
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
How much would the additional expense be, for example, for...
It would probably, I don't know what's up in there, but you're looking probably at $10,000.
Okay. Give you a much more versatile vehicle.
It would be more versatile, absolutely, because it's also an automated set, you know, take care of, and you don't need to, uh, pre-automated, pre-automated, you know, it 'll all, you know, it's probably much, you know, there's people...
You personally, you would prefer the crew cab?
I would.
Okay, if that's gonna serve your purposes, that's what you wanna do.
Okay, let's go on to the next one. Next piece.
Okay, next we have a chipper truck, $127,000, with its policy vehicle replacement policy. Again, the current vehicle's 1991. It has body rot, and this is one of the brakes failing. And you can see some pictures of the chipper truck up behind us now. And Jay tells us this is one of the most important trucks they have.
Uh, Counsel Sichella.
Yeah, does that include the chipper itself?
No.
Or just the truck?
No, it's just, it's just a truck.
Just a truck.
Yeah. The biggest, the biggest concern with this truck is that it's a, it's a huge safety issue. When this has a full load of wood chips, and if it's on any inclination, it, the emergency brake can't hold it.
Thank you. So we're gonna use the same chipper?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this piece? Uh, next, please.
Next we have a Bobcat, and the Bobcat costs about $72,000 with the attachments, and it's, again, gonna be a vehicle replacement. They use this, we currently use it for snow removal in sidewalks and parking lots, maintenance of playgrounds, and assist with heavy lifting.
I would like, I would like to, this, I don't necessarily want a Bobcat. It should have been presented as a skid steer type unit. Bobcat is a specific name brand. I would like to get a skid steer, and that's, I've already talked to Mr. Fiskay. This unit absolutely is, that, that unit right there is gone. It's been long gone for about, I shouldn't say long gone. It's been out of service for about two years. That, added, an additional Bobcat would utilize in almost every function of public works. We use, we could use this in parks, tow lots, sidewalk repair. I mean, with a city this congested and the traffic issues and the smaller areas that we have to work in, a Bobcat is essential in what we do.
You can see, the next picture is actually the attachment that we currently have in the vehicle.
Uh, Counsel Sichella.
Yeah, we, we bought a new Bobcat last year with a new sidewalk plow, correct?
No, that was, that was shot down, sir.
It was shot down?
Yep.
Did I shoot that down?
I, I don't recall. I, I heard, I heard it was, I heard it was a very lively conversation.
Yeah. I, I see the price in that Bobcat is $38,000 approximately. And the attachments are another $30,000 or so?
Correct. For instance, if we were to purchase a new skid steer, one of the attachments that we're looking at would be to have forks. Right now, we have a old forklift. It's still usable, but if we get multiple loads coming in, which happens quite frequently, especially in the spring and summer, we, they will have to, and the other thing, too, with our, our forklift is we have limited on how high it can go. If we had another unit like Bobcat or skid steer type unit that had forks, we could utilize it for unloading on the job site. I mean, it's just one of many functions that we could utilize, you know, take, take advantage of, I should say, at a job site.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point here, we have about two minutes left. I'm gonna ask for a motion to refer number two to public hearing or to our city, city clerk for a public hearing. Can I hear that?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. It's been referred to a public hearing. The second would be this 101.34 would be referred out with no recommendation pending the, the public hearing, pending the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Yes.
That's good. Make a move for German, someone?
This fellow's gonna have a license.
Make a move for German, German?
Motion for a German.
Motion made, second, for a German. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
It's a lot of work to do in one hour. This is crazy. Trying to go in, do one thing. It's a lot of work for one hour.
[laughter] There you cake. Uh, Board of Aldermen, please, uh, sit down for our meeting, please.
I know it's good.
Mike, I just gotta do a couple of grabs.
I'll do a free pen, yeah.
Yeah, Board of Aldermen, City Council.
Before we start, I have two dedications. April 12th at 9:00 a.m. on the Conners of Pleasant and Linden, that'll be the Dennis and Edward Leonard dedication. On April 12th at 10:00 a.m. at the Conners of Waverly and Buckdom will be Dominic and Emilio Codillo. Those are from Mr. Hickey. Also, regrets, and Counsel McGonigal, he's away, working tonight, and he'll be back with us next week. Read the attendance, please.
Counsel Capone.
Here.
Counsel Del Solo.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
Counsel Handlin.
Here.
Counsel McGonigal.
Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel Polatano.
Here.
Counsel Sichella.
Here.
Counsel Sani.
Here.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasie.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Ten minutes. We did the pledge allegiance prior to this meeting. So, clerk, we, do we have a sheet, a signing sheet?
Yes.
Uh, clerk, read out number one.
Item number one, the resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasie as President shall the ten-minute public participation period during this formal session.
Make a motion to open public participation.
Please, motion made, second, to open for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Do we have a sheet?
Mr. President, I don't. There's nobody on the public participation sheet, so I make a motion to close public participation.
First, does anybody have any, would like to talk in any issue that's before us tonight?
Second motion, Chairman, close.
Motion made, second, to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Clerk, we, do we have a...
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to spend the rules and take item number five.
Uh, motion made, spend the rules, take item number five. All in favor? Posed? Clerk, read out item five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Counsel Maccasie as President. Petition for a second-hand license from Abdella Bukarocha, DBA Everett Computer Repair at 139 Main Street, to buy used computers and cell phones, repair them, and resell them.
Uh, Counsel Sichella.
Yes, I know this gentleman. I've dealt with this gentleman. He runs a good shop, and he's honest and very fair, so I would approve, I'd like to get approval of this license tonight. Thank you.
The sponsor is here.
Okay, uh, Counsel Handlin.
Mr. Chairman, through to our clerk, is there anything opposing appointment of this particular license?
Paperwork calling out? Yeah, all paperwork's in order.
Do we have any questions?
I make a motion for favorable action.
I second that motion.
Uh, motion made, and second for favorable action, no call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasie.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the license has been granted. Congratulations and good luck.
Number three, take three.
Uh, Counsel Florio.
I have a motion to spend the rule, take item number three, appoint D...
Second.
Was it motion made to spend the rule to take item?
Number three.
Number three. All in favor?
Aye. Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasie as President, subject confirmation by the Honorable Board of Aldermen. I call the jury hereby appoint Nicole O'Donnell as patrolman to the City of Everett's Police Department.
Favorable action on the order.
Second motion, second. Is someone coming before us here? Uh, motion made, favorable action, no call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasie.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, congratulations. Uh, Ms. O'Donnell, you've been confirmed.
[applause]
[laughter] Hi, Nicole O'Donnell. I solemn swear. I solemn swear. I will faithfully and seriously... This God will perform. This God will perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. All the duties incumbent upon me. As a member of the Everett Police Department. As a member of the Everett Police Department. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. And understanding. And understanding. Agree with the rules. Agree with the rules. Regulations. Regulations. Laws. Laws. Ordinances and charter. Ordinances and charter. Of the City of Everett. Of the City of Everett. That only God. Still help me God. I do solemn swear. I do solemn swear. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the commonwealth and Massachusetts. To the commonwealth and Massachusetts. And will support the Constitution. And will support the Constitution. And laws of the Commonwealth. And the laws of the Commonwealth. That only God. That only God. I do solemn swear. I do solemn swear. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. The United States of America. The United States of America. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. That only God. That only God. Thank you. [applause] Mr. President, can we have a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess?
Make a motion for...
At this time, I'd like a five-minute recess, so pitchers and family.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhazey.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the license has been granted, uh, congratulations and good luck. Uh, Counsel DeFlorio.
I have a motion to suspend the rules, take items number three. It's a point D.
Second.
Was it motion made to suspend the rules, take item?
Number three.
Number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhazey's president, subject to confirmation by the Honorable Board of Aldermen. I call the jury hereby appoint Nicole O'Donnell as patrolman to the City of Everett's Police Department.
Favorable action on the order.
Second motion, second. Is someone coming before us here? Uh, motion made, uh, favorable action, roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhazey.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, congratulations, uh, Ms. O'Donnell, you've been confirmed.
[applause]
At this time, I'd like a five-minute recess, so, uh, pitchers and family can come up here and, uh, celebrate with Ms. O- Officer O'Donnell here.
She should have a baby go up there with her.
Linda, does everybody time aboard?
Yeah.
That's her, that's her mother.
Mr. President, can we have a five-minute?
At this time, I'd like a five-minute recess, so, uh, pitchers and family can come up here and, uh, celebrate with Ms. O- Officer O'Donnell here.
She should have a baby go up there with her.
Oh. I don't know, there must be, there mu- I think there's a couple.
Yeah, Linda from her mother's.
Wait a minute. That's the son.
Linda, does everybody time aboard?
Yeah.
That's her, that's her mother.
I didn't know that.
Oh, O'Donnell. Oh, okay. No.
Item number ten is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhazey's president, committee on legislative affairs and elections report on the revised ordinance of City of Everett being amended by adding section seven dash six as amended in section seven dash seven.
Let's go.
That's awesome.
That's our family. Oh. I don't know, there must be, there mu- I think there's a couple.
Yeah, Linda from her mother's.
Wait a minute. That's the son.
Linda, does everybody time aboard?
Yeah.
That's her, that's her mother.
I didn't know that.
And O'Donnell's husband is the guy that works down at City District.
Oh, O'Donnell. Oh, okay. No.
Still swelled up, and I'm still limping a bit, but I'm walking every day and getting stronger. In the month of August, I'll be perfect, I'll be running.
Yeah, right.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Item number two is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhazey's president, to chief of chairman officers hereby grant permission to accept and dispose of the following sixty-five televisions and stands from the school department outdated and no longer in use.
Favorable action. Uh, second. On the motion, Counsel Sichetta.
On the motion, uh, I know it was last year, I believe, uh, Alderman and Makhazey at the time wanted to know if there were any spare used TVs and so on and so forth for charities. Could we possibly get some of these given to charities and clubs before we dispose of them? Who am I speaking to?
I believe that once they declared.
But, uh, the city's, uh, Melissa Murphy, I'm sorry, Chief of Staff.
Yep. That's Melissa, yeah.
Hi, once they declared surplus, we can pretty much rid of them any way we want to, but the city can't actually give any charitable donations, so we wouldn't be able to really give them to charity. Um, typically, when we get rid of something, it's usually in such condition that it's not usable anymore. Um, I haven't, I can ask the school department what the use is here, but again, we, we're not allowed to make donations to charity as a city, unfortunately.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Favorable action.
Second. Motion made, second, to, uh, um, motion made for favorable action, uh, roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor Ro- uh, Rosa DeFlorio.
Yes.
Sit your hole in there. Counselor Handlin.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal. Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Polatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhazey.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
We grant the permission to accept and dispose of the following items.
Item number.
Uh, clerk, item number four.
Item number four, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhazey's president to amend the zoning ordinance banning in new section thirty-one medical marijuana treatment centers.
Uh, Counsel, uh, Counsel McKinnon.
Uh, on this, what are we, uh, what are we doing with this piece?
We're gonna refer to the planning board.
We have to refer to the planning board, I believe.
Well, legislation fears of electric.
No, we, we were told to refer to the planning board.
Planning board.
Yes.
Planning board. Uh, Counsel Sichetta.
Before we do that, uh, I have a couple of questions that maybe you might answer before it goes to committee, and, uh, we usually, as counselors, Aldermen, Counsel- Aldermen, used to give out permits and so on and so forth. I read this ordinance, and the Pl- Planning Board is the board that's gonna give this permit out. I don't understand that at all. And the other thing is, the state is gonna give these licenses out, so we have nothing to do with the license, just the place that they're gonna be. But I still wanna know why the Planning Board is gonna get involved in this, and why not the Board of Counsel. Why are they taking this, uh, from the council? It should be one of our things.
Could we have the city clerk answer that question, please? It's, uh, it's sent to the Planning Board, and they're the ones who will, uh, handle the zoning of it. That's because it's zoning, it's licensed by the state. I think what we have here is just, uh, what zone these centers can be in. And it'll come back to us, by the way. It's like any other zoning change, where we send it to the Planning Board, they hold a public hearing, they send it back to us, and then we hold a public hearing on it, and then we vote on it. But they give us a recommendation on all zoning.
The only thing is, this ordinance, as written, says that the Planning Board will issue the permit. I don't know why they issued the permit, why it shouldn't be the council.
If that would make it easier.
Uh, city's list, if you could answer these, please. Uh, Counsel Sichetta.
The, the Planning Board is the zoning, um, is the board that hands out a special permit. A special permit is zoning relief. That's what their authority is under this ordinance.
So they issued the permit itself?
It's a special, is it zoning relief, which is called a special permit. It's zoning relief. It's like a varian- it's similar to a variance. Zoning variance is a zoning special permit.
And we have nothing to do with this, is it, Counsel?
Correct. You, you never had any, uh, authority for any kind of zoning relief?
We did for, uh, boarding houses, we did for.
No, those are, those are, those are licenses, this is zoning relief.
How about pawn shops?
Yep.
How about, uh, fortune tellers? Didn't we put those before restful permits?
Those are, yes, those are licenses. This is, what the Planning Board's authority is, is zoning relief. It's called a special permit, but it's for zoning, zoning relief.
Okay.
Uh, Counsel Delasola.
So if we send it to the Planning Board, it's out of our hands, or will it come back to us still?
The, the ordinance as a whole?
Yeah.
The ordinance, um, you, under the state law, you have to refer to the Planning Board within fourteen days of receiving it. They hold a public hearing, they make recommendations, they send it back to you, and you have a public hearing with, um, within thirty days. You have to, um, advertise it for thirty days, and then you have a public hearing, and then you amend it, send it to committee, however you wanna handle it, and then you approve it, just like any other ordinance.
And what if we don't wanna approve it?
Or no?
You can make amendments to it, um, but the Attorney General handed down ru- a ruling saying that, um, you can't ban medical marijuana treatment centers in a city, so if you don't pass a zoning ordinance, then that means that medical marijuana treatment centers can come in as of right, and they can go anywhere. This zoning ordinance sets restrictions.
Where we're gonna put it?
Yeah.
No. Uh, Counsel McKinnon.
Yeah, so, so basically, in a, in a legal opinion, what we have to do is send this to the Planning Board.
Tonight, yes.
Tonight.
You should refer to the Planning Board so they can have this, uh, public hearing.
Okay.
And then send recommendations back to you.
And then, once we get the recommendations at that point, then that's when we get involved.
Yes, and then you have your public hearing.
And we can amend.
Just like any other zoning ordinance that you've ever passed.
Okay. Now, this is just asking for zoning in a specific area of our city.
This is not designating a district, this is restricting areas where it can go.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Handlin.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Just to make it perfectly clear, if we do not pass an ordinance like this, someone can come in here, grow marijuana, process it, package it, and sell it for medical reasons.
Yes.
Without any, any, uh.
There, there are certain restrictions that they have to abide by under the state regulations, but this ordinance tightens it up a little bit more.
Okay.
Uh, from the chair, if I may, um, we have an ordinance restricting, you know, uh, tattoo parlors. We lump them together, and they, it's a restriction, or they can be put.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, what?
We have a, we have an, uh, obviously, an ordinance, and we changed laws where certain things, where adult entertainment can be located.
Yes.
Could we also add this to that?
This is similar to that.
Well, could we, could we add that to this? And when do we do it? If we send it to the Planning Board, they can grant anything they want, but if we?
No, the, the, so, what, the Pl- under the state law, the Planning Board has to have a special hearing, just not, because it's a zoning amendment, and under the state law, the Planning Board has to hold a public hearing to hear public comment on.
Understandably.
Any concerns that people have on the zoning ordinance.
But we can't, we can't rezonate, zone it, apply it to one of our, our zoning restrictions before this goes to pa- not, it goes there?
Well, once it, once it comes back to you, it, the Planning Board sends it back to you for recommendations, just like any other zoning ordinance, and that's when you can.
Okay.
Do whatever you like to it, but you also have to have a, a public hearing, too.
Yep. Okay, uh, any more questions from this man here? Uh, Counsel Polatano.
I just want a clarification, 'cause I think I understand the process. This is because this type of, of, of a use is not currently in use in the city. So by sending this to the Planning Board, it's to create a, an area, help, uh, give us a rec- some insight as to where we wanna designate it?
Yeah.
If we don't designate it, they could open up next door to a school, for example.
Is, well, under the state regulations, um, it can't be within, I think, five hundred feet of a school or a park or a playground. Um, this ordinance, this zoning ordinance is designed to tighten it up a little bit more for the, specifically, the City of Everett.
Okay, and those recommendations will come back to us to vote on?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Favorable action on the order.
Motion made. And the motion's the Senate.
I'm sorry, refer to the Planning Board.
Second.
Second.
Uh, motion made, uh.
With recommendations.
Motion made, with recommendations.
By recommendation.
Your recommendations.
Do I have a recommendation?
Wow. We don't have to have recommendations of where it's gonna be?
No.
Okay, without recommendations, huh?
So, motion made. Motion made, second, to, uh, send this to the Planning Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's been sent to the Planning Board. Clerk, read item six.
Item number six is an order sponsored by a communication from the Veterans Department and an order sponsored by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio, in his reply for a favorable recommendation for the intersection of Dean Street and Warren Street to be dedicated in honor of Edwin Francis Paris and Assunta de Ugadi.
Accept the communication, place on file.
Motion made to accept the communication, put on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? It's been accepted and put on file. Clerk, read item number eight.
Item number eight is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhazey's president, committee on community and business development to report that the City of Everett accept Mass. General Law sixty-four G, section three-eight, to impose a local rule market penalty excise at the rate of six percent with a recommendation, favorable action.
Accept the committee report, place on file, favorable action on the order.
Second. Motion made to accept the communication, place on file, favorable action. A roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Handlin.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel Makhazey.
Yes.
Nine yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Uh, clerk, read item number nine.
Item number nine, Legislative Affairs Elections Committee report on rules via Slavich on appropriate distribution of city council expenses for assist- official city business by city councils, with a recommendation to grant further time and invite city auditor and assistant city solicitor.
Accept committee report, and grant further time.
Second. Accept the commi- uh, committee report and grant further time, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Grant further time.
Item number ten is an ordinance sponsored by Counsel Peter Ray and Polatano, committee on legislative affairs and elections report, that the revised ordinance of City of Everett be amended by adding a section to be numbered seven dash six, which said, section reads as transfer of funds with a recommendation for favorable action on section seven dash six as amended in section seven dash seven.
Let me explain, yes, please, uh, Mr. Counsel Polatano.
Yeah, this is to put in, uh, precise language on transferring of funds, uh, and we had, uh, this was similar to the, uh, piece that was submitted last. If we send it to the planning board, they can grant anything they want, but if we...
No, the, the, so, what, the, under the state law, the planning board has to have a special hearing, just not, because it's a zoning amendment. And under the state law, the planning board has to hold a public hearing to hear public comment on...
Understandably.
Any concerns that people have on the zoning ordinance.
But we can't, we can't rezone it, zone it, apply it to one of our zoning restrictions before this goes to, that goes there?
Well, once it, once it comes back to you, it, the planning board sends it back to you for recommendations, just like any other zoning ordinance, and that's when you can do whatever you like to it. But you also have to have a, a public hearing, too.
Okay. Any more questions from this man here? Counselor Polatano?
I just want to clarify, because I think I understand the process. This is because this type of, of a use is not currently in use in the city. So by sending this to the planning board, it's to create a, an area, help, uh, give us a rec, some insight as to where we want to designate it?
Yeah.
If we don't designate it, they could open up next door to a school, for example.
Is, well, under the state regulations, um, it can't be within, I think, 500 feet of a school or a park or a playground. This ordinance, this zoning ordinance is designed to tighten it up a little bit more for the, specifically the city of Everett.
Okay, and those recommendations will come back to us to vote on?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Motion made. Motion to refer to the planning board.
Motion.
And the motion is the Senate to...
Second.
Second. Motion made, uh...
With recommendations.
Motion made with recommendations.
My recommendations.
Your recommendations.
Do I have a recommendation?
Wow. We don't have to have recommendations of where it's going to be?
No.
Okay, without recommendations, huh?
So, motion made, motion made second to, uh, send this to the planning board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's been sent to the planning board. Clerk read item six.
Item number six is an order sponsored by a communication from the Veterans Department and an order sponsored by Council Rosa de Florio in its reply for favorable recommendation for the intersection of Dean Street and Warren Street to be dedicated in honor of Edwin Francis Paris and Assunta de Ugadi.
Accept the communication and favorable action on the order.
Second. Motion made to accept the communication.
Yes.
Second.
And roll call, uh, vote.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delissola?
Yes.
Counselor De Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Polatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. Item number seven is communication to acknowledge receipt of communication from Mass. Department of Transportation Highway Division regarding issuance of Chapter 91 waterway license copies in each mailbox.
Accept the communication, place on file.
Motion made to accept the communication, put on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, has been accepted and put on file. Clerk read item number eight.
Item number eight is an order sponsored by Council Michael Marquez, his present. Committee on Community and Business Development report that the city of Everett accept Mass. General Law 64G Section 38 to impose a local rule market penalty excise at the rate of 6% with a recommendation for favorable action.
Accept the committee report, place on file, favorable action on the order.
Second. Motion made to accept the communication, place on file, favorable action. A roll call vote.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delissola?
Yes.
Counselor De Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Polatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
No.
Counselor Marquez?
Yes.
Nine yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Motion, uh, the clerk read item number nine.
Item number nine, Legislative Affairs Elections Committee report on rules via Slavich on appropriate distribution of city council expenses for assist, official city business by city councils with a recommendation to grant further time and invite city auditor and assistant city solicitor.
Accept committee report and grant further time.
Second. Accept the community, uh, community report and grant further time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Grant further time.
Item number 10 is an ordinance sponsored by Council Peter Rade and Polatano. Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections report that the revised ordinance of the city of Everett be amended by adding a section to be numbered 7-6, which said, section reads as transfer of funds with a recommendation for favorable action on section 7-6 as amended and section 7-7.
Let me explain, yes, please, uh, Mr. Counselor Polatano.
Yeah, this is to put in, uh, precise language on transferring of funds. Uh, and we had, uh, this was similar to the piece that was submitted last year by the Board of Alderman, uh, with, with one or few exceptions to it. But we'd like to make the, uh, we do have a favorable recommendation with the following amendment, and that is to delete a, from the existing copy, which is section 7-6C, meeting of their respective branches, and replace it with first formal session of the city council.
Second. On the amendment.
The amendment, it reads again, it's, you're going to replace...
The original copy went in with old language from the bicameral system, so the, we just need to take that one phrase out of, uh, section C and replace it with first formal session of the city council.
Okay.
And then it'd be favorable action.
And, and all this is, is just wording on this?
It's wording on it.
Yes.
It's, it's old language to new language.
Oh, all right, Counselor Capone?
Just for clarification, uh, through, through the chair, which exact rule are we looking at? I'm trying to find this one. It's, uh, section 7-6 and adding a section 7-7. 7 sec, dash 6 is transfer of funds. Uh, section A says, whenever it is deemed necessary by any department of the city to request a transfer of funds, such request shall be made in writing and addressed to the mayor. So B is upon approval of the mayor, all such transfer requests shall be forwarded to the city council for their consideration. Section C is a copy of all such transfer requests shall be delivered to each member of the city council at least 72 hours prior to, and the copy that was submitted said meeting of their respective branches, and which such request will be, be considered. It's the meeting of respective branches we're looking to remove and replace it with first formal session of the city council. Okay?
Okay.
Then D is when all such transfer requests are received by the city council, they shall additionally include, one, the primary reason for the transfer, including any expenditures or shortfalls not addressed in the department's operating budget; two, the correct designation of the actual accounts from which, to, from and to which each such transfer is being proposed, including their account numbers; three, the current balances of the accounts involved in each such transfer is certified by the city auditor; and then section E is the city council shall consider each such transfer request in accordance with the rules of the city council. Thank you very much. Okay.
Favorable action on the amendment?
I don't even know what it is, I...
Mr. President, we had a motion...
We have a motion on the amendment.
For the, for the amendment?
We have a motion in a, a second.
In a second. On the amendment to change the language?
The motion on the, uh, amendment to change the language.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and was the...
Favorable action as amended? Second motion.
Motion made and favorable action as amended. I'm not sure what this thing is.
I don't, I'm not either. I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm not, uh, so I'm confused.
Can we have a copy of all that information in front of us? We just vote on something we don't know, we're not in the committee.
What it is, is...
Well, he's got something in front of him. Can we have a copy?
It's, what it is. It's just his, no, no, it's actually in, uh, it's actually a part of a old...
No, no, he is right.
No, it doesn't bleed anything, it just takes the new, it's just new wording on it. Yeah.
Okay, so old to new.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Motion made to, uh...
Mr. Chairman, if I...
Yes, uh, counsel.
If I could, um, during the committee meeting, uh, the city solicitor, uh, Rodriguez had, had, had reviewed this, and, uh, you know, we are in compliant with our, uh, our existing transfer policies, so just want to let you know that we did go over through this in detail.
Okay.
Favorable action?
Motion made, favorable action.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm sorry, excuse me, but when anything is in committee like this, I believe we should have something in front of us of what was discussed in committee, because the rest of us just stand here like we don't know what happened in committee.
Hear the report.
I mean, I was at the committee meeting, so I happen to, to understand this, but what happens, five people are at a committee meeting, six people are not at a committee meeting, the other six people are voting on something that don't know what happened.
It's a valid point.
So, well, that's the purpose...
Could we please read the committee report?
So the purpose is to give everybody a committee report, is what I'm requesting.
Could we please read the committee report?
Yeah.
They're all online, too, are the committee reports. Anyhow, it, the committee considered an ordinance offered by Council Peter and Polatano to add a new section, 7-6, transfer of funds. City auditor Richard Visque and the city, assistant city solicitor Dave Rodriguez were present. Mr. Rodriguez noted that they had reviewed the proposed new section 7-6 and 7-7, and recommended that 7-6 be amended by deleting the words of their respective branches in subsection C. Mr. Visque stated the proposals were fine and were already standard operating procedure. Mr. Visque requested the city council consider adding a new rule that requires all financial matters that are sent into committee be referred out prior to the next regular meeting. The committee recommended favorable action on section 7-6 as amended and 7-7.
Favorable action on the order. I second the motion.
Uh, motion made, uh, and second as amended. All, uh, roll call vote.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delissola?
Yes.
Counselor De Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Polatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
As amended, then, uh, voting favorably. Quick read.
Item 11. Yes, you're right. No, that was as amended. Item number 11 is Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee report that the mayor, that the city council and mayor's office where Calvary developed a snowshoveling ordinance in the city of Everett with a recommendation to request further time.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes, on this, uh, from the mayor, I'm all in favor of having our sidewalk clean and so on and so forth. But this came before the Board of Alderman and Council for the past six years, or maybe eight years for that matter. My question on this, and has always been, what about the elderly? What about the people that can't afford to do it? I've been quoted in the newspaper as bringing this up and saying something about the elderly, and they say that I was kind of selfish bringing it up, where I am a senior citizen and an elderly person. The fact of the matter is, we do have elderly people in the city. We do have people that can't afford to have people shoveled. I would go along with this law only if we had something in there that elderly and senior citizens that can't afford to have it shoveled, have the city do it somehow or another, maybe with the new Bobcat we're buying. But that's the only way I would go with something like this. Thank you.
Counsel, uh, Florio?
You know what the sad part is? That the senior citizens are the only ones that are shoveling. That, that's what the sad situation is.
We have a, we have a, a wish for on here, uh, for, for the time. So do you make that a...
So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to grant further time while they work on it.
Motion made, uh, for further time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Has been granted, uh, further time. Clerk read item 12.
Item number 12, Legislative Affairs and Election Committee report to create an ordinance which would prohibit the stealing of trash barrels. I recommend, we'll come up with something creative to deter the same all over the community recently. Would a recommendation refer to City Services Commission?
Make a motion to refer to City Services.
Second. Motion made...
Mr. Chairman, on the motion.
Uh, Counselor Polatano?
Thank you. You know, I, I've been, I'm in the, I'm on the committee with this. We went back and forth. I mean, I, I've looked at this several different ways. I gave it some, I tried to be as open-minded on this as I could, um, but I, I have some issues with it. First of all, I, I, I don't have any issue with the sponsors' motivation to try to create a solution for a problem. That's not the pro, that's not the issue. But, you know, we've, there's, we have some question as to how the barrels are being stolen. If, if it being a crime to steal a barrel is not enough of a deterrent, how's a $25 fine make the difference? The question came up that the, the money that would be fined would be used to replace stolen barrels. But if you catch somebody and to find them, you have the barrel. That's evidence. So again, that doesn't hold, that doesn't really hold out, too, because you, you're using a fine as a deterrent for something that's already criminal. You're using the money to replace barrels, but to find somebody, you have to have the barrel as evidence, so you, you, you have the barrel. So what are you being reimbursed for? I, I just really can't look at this in any other way at this point where, and, and talking to some of our police officers, too, you know, I just can't look at this as any way, anything other than another means, uh, to raise money. And for that reason, I, I just don't think we need another hand in, in the residents' pockets. You know, I mean, I, I spoke with the city, I sent an email to the, uh, chief of staff today. I got a phone call this weekend from a resident down on Birch Street who has been calling the, the mayor's office for a couple of ti, you know, a few times to get a misplaced barrel that's in front of his house now for almost two weeks. I drove by it this weekend, it's still there. There's a missing barrel. Somebody is reporting that barrel missing, and yet, you know, the, the resident whose house it's in front of has been trying to get it picked up for almost two weeks. Now, again, that could be the exception, but the point is that I, I just really have a difficult time seeing this, this ordinance as a deterrent. Like I said, it, we ha, it's a crime already to steal a barrel, and if they're fining barrels outside of the city, as was, which was brought up in the committee, uh, then that, again, is, is theft, and the city has a course of action for that. Fining people $25 because the barrel's been misplaced in front of the wrong house, I, I just have a problem with that. I really do, and I, I will not be supporting this.
Uh, Counselor Simonelli?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I kind of agree with, uh, Counselor and, uh, Polatano. We, we've went through this three different times in, in the committee meetings, and it's been batted around, and it doesn't seem to make any kind of sense, really, because all you really need to do is put your name, you got your name, put the number on your barrel in big letters, and, uh, paint the big letters and numbers on your barrel and your house numbers, your street number, and, you know, I don't see many being stolen, and like, uh, the, Mr. Counselor said, it's, it's, if you get caught with them, yeah, then they'll, it's, it's still just taken back. There's no really need of a fine. So I'm, I'm kind of supporting, uh, Counselor Polatano on this.
Uh, Counselor Sichetta?
Yeah, I, I got a call, um, just last week, had to do something similar to this. He says, you know, when these trash men come by and pick up these barrels, they'll throw them in the middle of the street, they'll throw them next door, they'll throw them across the street, and people don't find them until maybe two or three weeks later or someone takes them the wrong barrel. So there is a lot of that being done, and maybe we ought to get to the Capital Waste Company and tell them for these people to put the barrels back where they got them from, and not leave them in the middle of the street, across the street, or next door. That's all I have to say.
Uh, Counselor, Counselor Florio?
Going back to it being, becoming a criminal action, if someone gets caught stealing these barrels, it's criminal, we have to send the police, go to court, uh, in the court. If they find them, the court takes the money. The city gets nothing. So, to me, this, I, the reason why we wanted it as a non-criminal is because we're just trying to get the barrels back because they cost a lot of money. So we're letting people know that if you take these barrels, we're going to find you. Right? I, I work in Chelsea. I saw two barrels on the Chelsea truck last week. So they're not, it, they're not being taken in the city, they're also being taken out of the city.
Uh, Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listening to everybody here, I'm, I'm, I'm reading this ordinance again, and perhaps we, we didn't go far enough, because we're talking about prohibiting the stealing of trash barrels, but the second part of that says to, ought to come up with something creative to deter it from happening in the first place. So maybe the fact that we want to recommend this to City Services is a place for it to go, because they're the ones that handle it. Maybe they have an idea on how to do this, not necessarily going to court or having the police involved, but, but maybe putting a bigger seal on it, this is a city of, something. But let them come up and see if they have an idea and get back to us.
Uh, Counselor McKinnon?
Right now, uh, the way that I understand it is because my, had it happen to me, is you have to go down and report it to the police. You make a report out there, and then capital wastes come back, and they actually have a tracking device on each barrel, and they locate it, supposedly. Now, there's also a book that's held in the mayor's office, which has the coding numbers across for each barrel that's already there. So, um, I think, like, finding the barrel, it's not really a, a, a matter of finding it, it's just when they take it out of the city, uh, that's the problem. So, um, if you're already creating a, a report from the police department, it is a criminal action, so I think maybe it should go there, and then we can figure it out from where it's going to be happening down at City Services, because they already have a program in place already.
Yeah, but, and, and just for the chair, just to talk, two seconds to put this to rest, I, I think it should go to City Services, let them do it. And also, why can't they give one or two of those tracking devices to people, the, the code enforcement, so if they go around even...
Yeah.
Spot check and find out whatever. I mean, it's, you know, that's, we should be handling this.
It, it's already, put it, put it this way, we're already creating a criminal action by...
Yes.
Reporting it to the police. So that's already there. The tracking devices are already there. The book at the mayor's office is already there, so maybe they can find a better way to do it.
And so the, the motion before us here?
Favorable action.
Refer to City Services.
Refer to City Services.
Uh, motion made, and second, to refer this to City Services. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Has referred to City Services. Was that, uh, no? Uh, we, one, okay. Clerk, are we going to do this collectively, 13, 14, 15?
Motion to take them collectively, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Motion to take 13, 14, 15 collectively, uh, erroneously appearing on our, on our
Yeah, refer to, refer to the next meeting for the purposes of a public hearing.
Motion made, take thirteen, fourteen, fifteen collectively, and refer to the next meeting in the purpose of a public hearing. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, roll call vote.
That's right. Item number fifteen will be referred to our next meeting, but no public hearing is held on that item. So, items thirteen to fourteen, refer to the next meeting for a public hearing. Item number fifteen is referred to the next meeting.
City clerk has to set up the public hearing.
Okay, so, motion made for thirteen, when accepted for thirteen and fourteen, refer to the next meeting to set up a public hearing, and number fifteen is also set to the next meeting. Period. Roll call vote.
It's all voice on this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're going to be referred out. Clerk read item sixteen.
Item number sixteen, Committee on Ways and Means Report on Examination of Monthly Bills and Accounts Submitted by the City Auditor Would Note That the Next Scheduled Meeting Is For Tuesday, April fifteenth at six P.M.
Accept the committee report, place on file.
Second.
Motion made second to accept report and place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's been placed on file, the report, clerk read item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen, Resolution Sponsored by Counsel Rosa DeForio and Counsel Cynthia Sani, City Contact Owner Gateway Shopping Plaza, in writing, Requesting to Procure Traffic Details on Weekends and Holidays Due to Serious Public Safety Issues Relative to Traffic Congestion in That Area. Refer to Police for Request for An Update on the Details.
Mr. President?
Counsel DeFloria?
I did go there yesterday, I did speak to a couple of people that work at Costco's, and they said this is definitely working better with the detailed cops there. So, it's not a hundred percent perfect, but it's a lot better than what it was. So, I'm going to make a motion to refer it back to sponsor and send a thank you letter to the mall manager department.
Second. Motion made to refer this back to sponsor, and also to send a thank you letter to the mall manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, Resolution Sponsored by Counsel Richard Delasola, Someone From the Mayor's Office appeared at the next Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Service Meeting Relative to the Decision to Discontinue Trash Pickup for Local Businesses.
Counsel Delasola?
Melissa, come up here, please.
Refer this to a committee, publicly.
Send it refer to a committee.
Refer to a committee here.
You didn't want to refer it?
No.
Okay.
He doesn't want to refer it.
Okay. Melissa, please.
How's it doing? I've got a couple of questions on this. I got calls from three different businesses scattered throughout the city about the trash would not be picked up anymore because of hazardous material being dumped in their trash?
Yeah, about eight months ago, I think is what you're referring to, about eight months ago, the City Services Commission passed a regulation that we would not be picking up trash for auto repair, auto repair, I can't get that out, and in like steel companies, because the majority of their trash is waste that is not acceptable waste under our ordinances. So, we do not pick up trash because it's unacceptable waste from gas stations, auto repair places, and steel. That's the only local businesses that don't have trash picked up. They all received a letter about a month ago just reminding them that we don't pick up their trash, so I think that's probably what precipitated the calls to you.
Is it because something was thrown illegally, or just...
It's because we have a list in our ordinances of waste that we don't pick up, and that waste includes steel, construction debris, automotive repairs. It's always been that way since I worked here, we've always had this list, and it was codified in the regulations that we continue to not pick up that waste, so they did not get a trash bin when the trash bins went out, because it's waste that's not acceptable, capital does not accept.
Was there a warning sent out to them before this happened?
Yeah, when we went out with the whole trash program, we sent a flyer out to everybody explaining that they would not be getting it. Then we sent an additional letter out about a month ago, reminding them if they still had a trash can, we'd be coming to collect them, and then we collected all those trash cans. So, for about a year, we continued to let them have the trash can, but now we're at the point where we obviously can't pick the waste up, it's not acceptable waste, we can't bring it to our dump.
So, if we have a hundred businesses that we're having trash thrown away, for two or three that might have broken the rules, everybody else suffers for that?
I'm not saying they broke the rule, there's, it's unacceptable, they have unacceptable waste that we cannot pick up. So, we sent a letter out, and I, I didn't bring it because it said it was going to committee, and I'm happy to share the letter with you and share the companies with you that are not getting their waste picked up anymore, but they have waste that cannot be thrown out through the city. It never could be thrown out through the city. So, we never picked up the waste from them in the first place. We never picked up their, you know, mufflers, or their steel, or any of that stuff. It always was, was sent a different way.
What if they had just regular trash?
We found that it never really was.
There wasn't many?
Yeah. But like I said, if you want to send it to committee, Steve Sapino handles the trash in my office, he and I can come, we can go through the businesses with you, we can review the regulation that was passed by the City Services Commission, the ordinance that was passed by the city, and we can explain to you why it ends up being this way. It's not a hundred businesses, it's a few, it's a handful. I have a copy of all the letters.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there's no trash pickup whatsoever, not even paper products?
No trash pickup whatsoever for the auto repair, the gas stations, and the steel companies.
Did, did the mayor's office consider separating the possible, I understand about the hazardous waste, etc.
The unacceptable waste.
We really have no business being involved with that. But as far as paper, paper products, paper cups, anything of that nature, commercial businesses are paying quite a hefty sum for taxes, so was there any thought given to less restrictive means and just saying, that's it, you know, get rid of your waste in your own?
It was the City Services Commission that passed the regulation, saying that they weren't, we weren't going to pick that waste up any longer. We can revisit it with them if that's the wish of the body after it goes to committee. You know, I think the thought was that we're one of the only communities in the state that are, certainly in this area, we all remember when we went to the trash container program, we did the presentation about it, that picks up any commercial waste at all or doesn't require a payment for commercial waste. So, I think that that was kind of the thought behind this was, they really don't have a lot of waste that we can't pick up, the dumpster's already coming to pick up everything else anyway, so what little paperwork they probably have, they could put in the dumpster. I think that was the thought behind the City Services Commission's determination. But I'm happy to bring all documentation in, in the minutes from the meetings if you want to see those as well.
I have your questions.
I'll sit down. What's matters before you?
Let's see, back to sponsor, refer us back to sponsor.
Second, please refer him back to sponsor.
Motion made second, refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Refer back to sponsor.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion made second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1354.15]